The date is April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the time is seven P M. This meeting, this meeting is now called to order. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mikail.
Here.
Bud Matts.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Veneziano.
Boucher.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Kohler.
Present.
With six present and one absent, there is a quorum this evening. There are no minutes to approve this week, no mayor's report. Are there any ward reports this evening? Yes, Aldrin O'Brien?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real quick update from last night's Economic Development Committee meeting. As with the meeting schedule, we do meet every other month, so we had a meeting last evening. A lot of great discussion with the committee that was there. Just three highlights. We discussed, did a brainstorming session on possibilities for commercial office property tenant attraction programs. We did review an incentive request for Mitroakana Express, which is looking to open here at thirty-one thirty Kirchhoff Road. There was unanimous support for it to move forward to council. The one action we did ask from the owner is, we brought up the question, there's also a Mitroakana on Elgonquin. And we didn't know about a franchise, franchisee relationship, independent relationship. The young lady that presented to us last night did confirm she is a Mitroakana Express, which is independent versus Mitroakana Premium, which is a franchise location. So we just asked if she could provide verification on the legal status of her business name to ensure that they're not going to be forced into any type of closure due to trademark infringement. Because that was our concern from E D C, is if we provided the incentive and then six months down the road, they had to close due to some type of infringement, we wouldn't be able to claw back the incentive that we had provided to them. And then we did have two business owners on Kirchhoff Road come to speak regarding the update to the comprehensive plan. They confirmed their support again of pillars one through three of the study and noted their concerns, opposition, and other ideas of a potential road diet similar to what we heard the twenty-fifth meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other ward reports this evening? All right. Hearing none. We will now open the meeting to the public for twenty minutes. In order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials and to guarantee to the elected officials an order and dignified form in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the city council. Per rules of procedure, the public is to address the city council, and the fact that no member of the city council responds does not mean that the city council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment. In other words, the council will listen to public comment, and if it pertains to an item that is on discussion here this evening, then they will then consider addressing that comment at that time in their comments or questions or at a later date or other city council meeting or committee of the whole. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. First, that any person who seeks to address the city council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. Each person addressing the city council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than four minutes of the allotted twenty minutes in order to address the city council. Questions and or commentary shall be limited to city business. Comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officers present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner which displays mutual respect, and profanity shall not be used in any form or manner. At this time, on the sign-in sheet, will Ms. Lynn approach the podium? And then we have our deputy city clerk here, who will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining of your four minutes allotted during public comment. Thank you very much.
Okay. Hi, my name is Lynn Griesmeyer. I'm here to talk about the planned diminishing of Kirchhoff Road. And I did attend the Beats and Bytes concerts, et cetera, and the study that was presented at the church. And did place comments with the sticky notes that were given the residents to provide their input. And I only saw one item about the road of Kirchhoff being discussed in that group of studies. And that was only to say that Kirchhoff Road is experiencing a lot of speeders. What would you recommend doing that? That's the only thing that I saw attending several of those studies or comments. And then in the News and Views newsletter back in March of two thousand and twenty-three, there was a reference to business economic development, and they had a list of points that were goals for the city. But then now just the end of this year, September, October, is when this came out to the public in the newsletter showing the suggested diminishing of Kirchhoff Road. In that gap of time, it seems like there should have been something more discussed. And also, the, with the diminishing of the road is going to take away the business for the, those store owners because it's going to cause backups. And I can't imagine the fire trucks and ambulances being able to get through if there's only of the middle lane that is going to be available for the, somebody to make left turns or go through. And Fire Station sixteen, that's their route to get from the fire station onto Kirchhoff Road to get down hips and then to be able to assist those people that need their service. And if there's a backup, somebody's blocking that middle lane, how long will that ambulance have to wait before they can keep moving along? And will that person who they're transporting, will that deter their treatment and cause further problems for them? And hopefully not loss of life because of the delays. And Station fifteen similarly faces the same problem. Spoke to a lady who lives on J Lane, and she said it is a regular passageway for the ambulances and the fire trucks to go down J Lane and then up to finally get onto Kirchhoff to make their, their service request. And the contract that was drafted should have been segmented, not all or nothing as what you are telling us that it must be. You should have done a segment on the signs, vote on it.
You have thirty seconds.
And instead of making everything all for this discussion. And what about the people that live on Kirchhoff Road? How are they going to get out of their driveways? And the people that are stuck in traffic are going to use those bike lanes that are proposed on Kirchhoff Road. So in all cases, I think it's a poor idea for every person that lives in this city. And then-
Your four minutes is up.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lynn. Next on the sign-in sheet is Mr. Ron.
Hi, I am Ron Hedke. I attended only a couple of meetings, but I think I might reiterate what other people are saying. There are fourteen owner-based businesses in our corridor. All fourteen have opposed the narrowing of the road. Also, it appears that the majority of residents along Kirchhoff Road and the community feel the same way as witnessed by petitions that are now going around to stop the plan at that point. We have had ample parking from activities that have taken place here, a low accident rate, a bike path we already have, and ample sidewalks. What I do think we need is a new traffic light at Oriole to slow down traffic and to provide a safe place for children to cross. We have lights at the other major intersections where the north-south streets go, but there's nothing there. That, to me, would slow down the traffic going in, provide kids who are at Sandberg, for instance, that live on that side over on the other side, to not have to go to Kirchhoff. What do they, or Meadow, they go, some of them, a lot of them cross over already in the back of the school and have to cross there. I also think it would help if we're talking about the traffic at the car nights. People taking off out of the lot there and speeding, and I have one of those cars, but, you know, rules have to be, have to be followed. And I'd like to see more transparency in this issue, and maybe we need to get the Daily Herald involved if we can't get the transparency. And maybe we need to start putting up signs that say, no narrowing of the road. I did see the police in the last couple of weeks being much more active at stopping people, either warning or giving them tickets. And I think that needs to be further enforced, but I think with the addition of the light, that would be a good thing. And I certainly think that putting up a stoplight and repaving our road would obviously considerably more reasonable cost-wise than ripping up the whole road and trying to do it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Ahmed?
Salaam alaikum. My name is Yusuf. Peace be upon you. I'm here to hopefully clear a few misconceptions in hopes of us becoming less divided than we are today. In case you are not aware, a Muslim by definition is anyone who submits their will to God. If you are a Christian, the verse from Gospel of John, chapter five, verse thirty, might come as a surprise where Jesus, peace be upon him himself, says in red letter, "I seek not my own will, but the will of the Father which had sent me." Anyone who says, "I seek not my own will, but the will of the Father which had sent me," is a Muslim. Jesus, peace be upon him, was sent only for the Jews, but Jesus, peace be upon him, was a Muslim. Some of you might have noticed that Muslims pray by falling their face to the ground. Well, if you look in the Bible, in Gospel of Matthew, chapter twenty-six, verse thirty-nine, you will find that Jesus, peace be upon him, also fell on his face and prayed, just as you see Muslims praying today. As a follower of Jesus, peace be upon him, when was the last time you fell your face to the ground and prayed, just as Jesus, peace be upon him, prayed in the Garden of Ketsimene? In case you are not aware, the word "Christian" came after Jesus, peace be upon him, was gone, when some of his followers went to the city of Antioch, modern-day Turkey, which was part of the Roman Empire then, to preach to them the oneness of God. This is when those who worshiped idols called the followers of Jesus, peace be upon him, Christians. It is mentioned in the Bible, in the Book of Acts, chapter eleven, verse twenty-six, "And the disciples were called Christians first in Antioch." So the name Christian was not given by God, not by Jesus, peace be upon him, not by any of his followers, but by the pagans of the Roman Empire. Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, said that all mankind is from Adam and Eve. An Arab has no superiority over a non-Arab, nor a non-Arab has any superiority over an Arab. A white has no superiority over a black, nor a black has any superiority over a white, except by piety and God consciousness. I end with the verse from the Holy Quran, from Surah Al-Hujarat, chapter forty-nine, verse thirteen, where Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala, says, "O mankind, indeed, we have created you from a single pair of a male and a female, and made you into nations and tribes, so that you may get to know one another. Indeed, the most noble of you in the sight of Allah is the most pious of you. Indeed, Allah is all-knowing and all-acquainted." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Betty?
My name is Betty Anderson. It has been very enlightening attending these meetings. The planning committee were very courteous and answered questions. The committee also informed us that the council were not always agreeable to the plans set forth by them. And yet, the council has very willingly accepted the plans set forth by complete strangers. It was also brought to our attention that information informing all the residents by mail would prove too costly. I repeat, too costly. The project is budgeted for six hundred thousand, but the city cannot afford to mail out important information. There are approximately twenty-three thousand residents, that's including children, of course. Only three hundred participated in this study. Not a good average. The city will rule the day if the other residents are not informed as soon as possible. They are the ones footing the bill. We already have established businesses, but this plan definitely is a, why are we getting rid of businesses? Because it's not a smart nor businesslike way to do things. I don't know who you hired to do the publicity, but they did not do, in fact, they didn't do a job very good or otherwise. That's all I have to say.
I have a Marja or Marja?
We have declined at this time. Thank you.
Okay. We have no pending items this evening. We do have ordinances before us, and the next item for ordinance, for first reading is item A, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero zero, to grant a special use permit for an art studio, workspace, or teaching at forty-three hundred Lincoln Avenue, units Q and R. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading? Thank you, Aldrin Kohler for the first, and thank you, Aldrin Boucher for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the first reading of this item? All right. Hearing none. Then the question is, shall the ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, this ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. This brings us to new business this evening. For our first item, item B, we need a motion to approve the payment of bills on warrant for April eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Is there such a motion? Thank you, Aldrin O'Brien for the first, and Aldrin Mikail for the second. Is there any discussion regarding the payment of bills on warrant this evening? Hearing none. The question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
Mikail.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With six in favor and none opposed, those resolutions are adopted. This now brings us to other business and reports. We have item H before the council this evening, which is a, I just want to double-check first with our parliamentarians. Since these are businesses and reports, do we anticipate a discussion and presentation with the council on this item? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So we will have a discussion and direction regarding our Kirchhoff Road corridor study, and to that I will first defer to our city manager, Rob Sacco.
Thank you, Mayor. We are conducting our presentation here. It's just a one-slide presentation as well.
We appreciate having, we appreciate every visual that we can in order to be able to facilitate the discussion. So we appreciate you putting that slide up for us.
Of course. So the agenda packet includes this evening a request for proposals, which is a follow-up based on the direction provided from the city council at its last city council meeting, related to obtaining data and conducting a traffic and parking study along the Kirchhoff Road corridor. In addition to the R F P, we're also seeking direction from the council in the two additional items listed on the slide, including establishment of the Town Center Zoning District, as well as direction related to the Invest in Cook grant application. For purposes of structure and the way that we'll advance through these considerations, I'll provide a little bit of input on the draft R F P, and then thereafter, a request council's input on the Invest in Cook grant, and then I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Glenn Cole, to talk about the Town Center Zoning District item. Specific to the draft request for proposals, the document was drafted based on input that was provided by council members, based on the desired data and information sought as part of that effort. The draft itself includes a component, which I'd like to present for council's consideration and possibly amending the R F P document, related to the parking study. Based on the feedback that we received, there was a request to include a review of the parking within the Kirchhoff corridor to make a determination of whether or not enough parking exists under our current conditions. Staff evaluated that, and we included the language within the R F P document. However, our suggestion, and we want to see clarification ultimately, is that based on our, based on the work that had gone into the planning project thus far and based on our analysis of the corridor itself, it's our opinion that conducting a parking study would be an expensive endeavor in and of itself. But beyond that, a parking study would evaluate the existing conditions within the corridor. That would entail evaluating the parking spaces and utilization of the private properties along Kirchhoff Road during daytime and afternoon time. So it's, it's a physical count of cars and utilization of parking spaces that exist on private property. Ultimately, what we would likely get out of that study result is that the parking which exists within the corridor is ample in order to support the private properties that already exist along the district. The question, we believe, from staff's end, that may be more worthwhile in order to evaluate the questions here and that the council is seeking, is with the proposed concepts included for the opportunity sites for development. As we evaluate those parcels and the way that they've been proposed within the plan study currently, we would suggest that it may be worthwhile, and I think the information would be more beneficial to the council and its analysis, to evaluate the amount of parking that can be built on- that can be built on site on those parcels, which would then also inform us, how many spaces are they short of what the code or international standards for parking on such a property would require? What that ultimately will tell us is, what is the parking shortfall, and where... How many additional parking spaces would be needed for such development that couldn't be provided on premises? Also known as public parking. And so, under such an analysis, our staff could actually conduct that. There's a standardized process to be able to do that analysis based on square footage and calculations based on the property size. Or we can modify the parking study component of the RFP draft, so that we can have a third-party conduct that analysis and provide that input, which would be a significantly less cost than evaluating the existing conditions. It's our perspective and recommendation that we already know the answer to the parking situation along Kerchoff Road, which is that those businesses that exist have been already designed and approved with the requisite amount of parking to support those businesses in place. So Jewel, for instance, has the required amount of parking based on what was approved as part of the development of that shopping center. What we don't know is how many parking spaces, or I think, rather than what we don't know, but what would be more beneficial for this evaluation is, how many parking spaces can be developed on those sites, and how many would be needed off premises? And so, staff ultimately is seeking council direction with respect to the RFP, with respect to the parking study component of it, and ultimately, if there is consensus to move forward with the RFP, staff would then make any modifications or edits to it as directed by council this evening, and then release the RFP to the public tomorrow. The process and timeline included within the RFP is aggressive. It is shorter than we would typically include for such a traffic study and parking evaluation, taking into account the need for us to move expeditiously while we are considering all of these different topics collectively. That said, with the council's last motion, there was a motion made to postpone for a two-month period. In evaluating the timeline that would be necessary for us to ultimately move through a RFP process, we believe that in order to allow time for the private sector to evaluate the RFP itself, to prepare their responses, and to go through a question-and-answer period as well, we will likely be looking at a period of essentially getting into July before we really can be able to bring back a recommended contract for the council's consideration, taking into account the time necessary to conduct the RFP itself. The last item I'd like to note is ultimately that the RFP and this study wasn't included in the original project scope within the city's budget, so at the time that we bring back a recommended vendor and a contract for council consideration, we would also include on that same agenda a budget amendment in order to account for the additional costs presented based on whatever that final dollar amount is. So I'm happy to answer any questions with respect to the RFP, and seeking council consensus and input on whether or not staff should proceed with the issuance of that RFP, and if that consensus is there, we will go ahead and issue tomorrow.
Thank you, Manager Saba. With that, are there any questions or comments from the city council, starting with Alderman O'Brien, and then I saw Alderman Kohler after that? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager Saba. That takes care of the questions that I had that were shared here. The other one, too, is I just, I know you mentioned the timeline perspective, is confirming that should this move forward, we would then also... The next step in the regular process for something like this would be for a developer to look at what needs might be along Kerchoff Road. I mean, the city property, Kitty Corner, the fire station, as well as the almost two acres that's privately held in front of the new M and I homes. That would just be a chronological step in this process, correct?
So functionally, the city has anticipated the timing of RFPs for the city-owned properties to be drafted and issued once we finalize the plan documents. So sequentially, we would go through the study, come back, and that would provide data for the council to ultimately make a determination on whether or not to include the transportation recommendations within the plan. If ultimately, the council's direction is to not include the transportation recommendations, there are components of the plan which staff would work with our consultant to revise based on the changes in the parking components that I had mentioned earlier. And then ultimately, when we bring back that plan in its final form, and the council approves it, we would then begin the process of issuing RFPs, so that those individuals who are responding to those RFPs would have a clear understanding of what the comprehensive plan says for this Kerchoff Road corridor, and be able to respond to it accordingly based on the zoning and the plan requirements, or plan specifications.
Great. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, ma'am. I'm comfortable with the RFP with that, knowing that city staff could do potential parking needs based on the analysis that could be done.
So is your recommendation, then, that you would prefer that the parking requirement in the RFP be adjusted or eliminated, since this can be taken care of in-house?
Yes.
Okay, and then to clarify, is the option here to eliminate the parking requirements completely, or to adjust them?
So the proposal is that we modify the parking study, so that instead of including the parking within the RFP, instead, our staff would do an analysis of the parking based on the information included in the plan of the opportunity sites, and do an evaluation of the number of parking spaces that can be placed onto that site, and how many parking spaces those parcels are short, thereby needing public parking. So it's removing it from the RFP and allowing staff to conduct that research and analysis.
Thank you. So to then to double-check, then, that is what you are proposing, is to then remove the parking study from the RFP, so that it can be completed in-house?
Correct, which I'm hoping would be some type of savings as well, but yes, ma'am, I do support retracting that and letting staff do it.
Thank you. Alderman Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Manager Saba, if you concede that we don't have a parking problem, then we don't need to do a study. Are you conceding that?
Well, I think what the parking... What I'm... The plan itself is a vision into the future, and there are opportunity sites within the district that we know have come forth with development proposals that have not been able to proceed because the issue has fallen on parking, and there not being enough parking on the property. And so, as far as the parking study to evaluate existing conditions, staff is recommending that we don't need that, because we know that the parking that already exists within the district is sufficient to support those businesses that are open and operating. Where we think that there may be benefit and information that would be helpful to the council is evaluating the parcels that are currently either vacant or undeveloped, so that we can present to the council what those... If a development were to move forward on those sites based on what we've conceptualized in the plan, how many parking spaces could be provided on that property, and how many would they be short? And that would then at least give an opportunity for the council to be prospectively looking at, if those parcels are ultimately developed as we conceptualize them, would they have enough parking or not?
Okay, so what he said is correct. I think we would agree, we don't have a parking problem with the current businesses and the current locations, mainly in the Phillips Edison area of the city, so there's no reason to do a study if we all agree on that. But I agree with you on that additional part for new parcels, and whether those would be adequate in the development, so we can go ahead with that. I think I also... I don't know if I came across in my input to you, asked if we understand whether additional parking on street actually provides a safety value. And so is that still on the table?
I believe the...
We could do that ourselves. I don't know if we need to consult, but...
Yeah, I think a lot of the safety components are reviewed typically during the engineering process of evaluating the on-street parking. We do have a city engineer on staff who we would work with with respect to evaluating the parking, and so between our public work staff and our community development team, I think that we can conduct that analysis. Certainly, the question of what does on-street parking with respect to safety, you know, how does safety impact on-street parking? Much of that also relies on design and configuration, and ultimately, where you have proposed crossings, and if there are mid-block crossings, and are they signalized crossings, a lot of that tends to be designed during the engineering phase of these projects. But to the extent that we can evaluate what we've had, what we have in the report, and what has been conceptualized for on-street parking, we will take a look at it from a safety perspective and provide a staff recommendation on our best practices related to on-street parking and any potential impacts on safety, and also working with the police department as well.
So I just want to make it clear, Madam Mayor, that I'm not objecting to anything yet, and I'm not a proponent of anything yet, because I'm waiting for this data. I will prioritize safety over most things. As part of my request also, and I don't think we need to have our consultants do this, I think we have our accident data within the city's records, and if we can see that ahead of time, we can start this process of understanding the safety issues. My review says there's been only one fatality on Kerchoff Road in the past twenty-five years of data that's out there. I don't know, I haven't looked. We need to understand the root causes of these, of whether this would work. Safety's a priority, I'll give that a priority. Business development is second priority, I got that. Community input's the third priority, so I get that. There was one other thing, Madam Mayor, if I may comment on this plan, and this came up. I did attend the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting this week, hid in the back of the room until somebody identified an alderman as being in the back of the room. But at that meeting, it wasn't clear to me if we all understand as council members, and I can tell you from the comments here, specifically Ms. Sanderson's comment, that we can't move forward with some of the plan while waiting for the other. And that came across when the Planning and Zoning Commission kind of blamed the city council for holding everything up, when they were trying to consider the zoning part of the plan, and say, "We could do some stuff on the zoning, but the council won't let us, because it's either all or nothing." And I think that was a comment I heard today from the floor. Is there a possibility, and I communicate with the mayor on this, I understand the things about, you know, state laws and everything about when plans are considered, but can you explain to everybody why we can't look at the various components of this and approve maybe the zoning part or the placemaking part of the plan, and kind of continue with the discussion on the transportation part? Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
City staff, Community Development Director Cole, please, if you'd like to answer that question for the Alderman.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Alderman, to answer your question, so procedurally, you're not stopped from doing that, right? But that wouldn't be our recommendation. I mean, the plan is written as a cohesive whole, and a lot of parts in particular rely on what's in the transportation section. So to illustrate a few points, the opportunity site drawings you see in the back of the plan, because they are such limited sites, you know, because there's limited area to work with, none of them show what would be the typical amount of parking necessary in a suburban environment like ours. For example, there's, you know, on the parcel Kitty Corner here at City Hall, there's a relatively large building, there's ten parking spaces, because it assumes that there will be a presence and the existence of public parking on the corridor, as well as, in that particular case, I think there's, there may be some right to use other parking within the front of the development. That recommendation looks a lot different if there's no on-street parking to rely on, which is some of what we talked about with the, these parking study comments. When it comes to the zoning sections, which is also this separate matter, you know, when folks are looking to develop property in really, you know, automobile-oriented corridors, right, not a neighborhood center, they don't look like that drawing you can see on the screen there. Some of what we're trying to achieve through the zoning, which is directly implementing the zoning section of that plan, is, you know, move buildings closer to the street, put parking in the back to try to create less punctuation by driveways for pedestrians, trying to reduce, really reducing the commercial parking minimum to zero, right? Allowing the market to dictate how much parking and development needs based on the availability of public parking, instead of, you know, us using formulas to try to impose that. And that goes on. In the economic development section, it talks about placemaking and, you know, how a neighborhood corridor could function. That doesn't change as much, but again, it's still eroded away a bit. The... And then finally, the placemaking and wayfinding suggestions, I don't know that those will really change at all, but they become less effective, or at least our, how we would anticipate effectiveness changes with the implementation of those transportation recommendations. So it's hard for us to disentangle this part of it in this case, and without handling the plan, it's hard for us to move into the zoning items that implement the plan. I know it sounds convoluted, but it was, you know, it was written as a combined product. If it's the city's council's direction to separate those, we'll try to do the best we can. That does, that process does take time, and it's... The procedural parts do make it hard to two-step it. You don't create a whole lot of certainty by adopting the plan without resolving that question. It may not be, you know, we ordinarily wouldn't recommend adopting the zoning without answering that question, but that's something we could navigate doing as well.
Paul?
Please.
So the only concern I have on this is, and I see all the different parts, and how they fit together and how they possibly could be separated, I think we should consider separating some things out, only because we have a moratorium that's going to expire soon, I believe, correct?
It will expire at the end of the month. It'll take at least a month past that to put anything we're talking about into place.
Yeah, so there's that going on, as well as trying to figure out whether you're going to change the zoning, or whether we're going to have the grandfather, anybody who wants to say, "I'm selling my property under the current terms," right?
That's... You've asked a simple question, which has a complicated answer again, Alderman. In short, you know, the zoning is really, applies to future development. It doesn't apply to...
Yeah.
A lot of the things that are on the corridor today can just keep going, is the simple answer.
I get it. One of the key things in this whole plan is the Philip Edison property. I believe when we said they hadn't done a lot of conversation with Philip Edison, is that true? Philip Edison is the owner of the Jewel property.
Yes, so I'll answer those in reverse order. I've had a couple of conversations with the property manager there. They've been kept apprised of this process throughout. You know, they haven't actively participated in it. I would say, though, going back to the front of your question, you know, the... So some of the concepts in this plan have been around for quite a while, right? Going back all the way to 2006. At that time in 2006, whole different economy, a lot of different circumstances, but there was an expectation that the shopping center was imminently or within the near future going to redevelop. It does not look as likely now as it did then, right? We have a shopping center that's performing well as an economic asset and has very low vacancy. It's successful in many ways. And so, this plan intentionally doesn't hang its hat on the idea that, you know, this very effective economic asset will be, will disappear overnight, right? Or that it'll experience a crisis. We don't think that's happening. But there is a section at the very end of the narrative part that says, hey, you know, this is most of the commercial area in the corridor. Past these few opportunity sites, past these short-term interventions, what happens on that site is really going to be determinative. And when we talk about things like zoning, when we talk about things like trying to create a public parking strategy, you know, I don't... I would not set the expectations very high, but part of what we're trying to do is open opportunities to do incremental redevelopment there. If you look, for example, at the western side of that shopping center, the parking demand is a lot lower. There's a lot more opportunities to do placemaking that connects to the park, there's opportunities to convert some of that parking into higher uses. There are a lot of different strategies that can be opened up. Not to say it'll happen, but that, you know, implementing new zoning rules and implementing some of these techniques could help us to achieve, or to get to those discussions, or so on. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, yes, it does. Madam Mayor, the only reason I ask these questions is because the seventh ward is generally a very quiet ward, and I don't hear a lot of issues with my residents in the ward. Occasionally, things we get, such as the lower farm issue. But this past month has been a very busy month for taking calls, emails, and responding to all those. Almost all of them have been negative on the road diet, until yesterday, when I got a slew of positive responses about the road diet. And so I don't know if there's a campaign in my ward to say, "Somebody contact, you know, Mike Kohler and give him your thoughts," but it's starting to get, you know, both messy and interesting, and so I... I, first of all, in the parking issue, I would approve going with that recommendation. I do want to also look at on-street, off-street kind of thing, just because of that, and I do want to see, by the way, the study, the traffic reports of... Those are within our own house. I don't have to get a traffic person that... But it, I think the discussion is going well, and I think we're getting a lot of input. But it, I think the discussion is going well, and I think we're getting a lot of input to help us. So I'm glad we took the time to listen. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. So then, in summary, you are in support of a staff's recommendation to conduct the parking component in-house, remove that from the RFP, and that you are also interested in ensuring that rather than adding to the RFP, it sounds like you are asking for additional information in-house. Is that correct? And what are those specific items that you are requesting of our planners and city engineers?
Yeah, that is correct, Madam Mayor. The parts that I just mentioned here, and I, we sent you a list of things to discuss, and I think that was shared with the rest of the council also. But the ones that discussed here is on-street versus off-street parking and the safety factors associated with that. And I think possibly our city engineers may have that, I don't know, or they can get that. These are studies that other people have done, you know, everything I've seen says that off-street parking is of course safer than on-street parking. Because there's no moving traffic. But I want to see what, whether we'd be adding a safety factor or taking away a safety factor.
Okay, given the
The other ones are police reports on accidents.
And given the, the quick timeline that we're looking at in order to be able to capture the value on this as well, I do want to allow the city engineer, Engineer Higginson, if you have any follow-up questions on the requests from the alderman, we would appreciate you being able to localize that now so that it's very clear that the alderman is getting the data that he needs to be able to make the decision going forward.
Yes, thank you. So my one question would be, I, when you're talking about the on-street versus off-street parking, are you looking for case studies or are you looking for like a crash reduction factor? Which, I'm not sure, like I have that, I haven't seen before, so I would have to do some digging. So what exactly are you looking for when it comes to that aspect?
Yeah, so if I'm going to evaluate the safety, much like the road diet plans we have, and I'll just express my concerns that I have about the proposal as it's presented here. They used Federal Highway Administration case studies as proposing the value, safety value of road diets. But the gross majority of those studies that they're referencing were four-lane to three-lane. Meaning they were adding a center turn lane. And not two lanes in each direction with no center turn lane. And if you look at their safety studies, they will say that the biggest value of that was adding a left turn lane. We've got a five-lane going to three-lane, so I'm not sure whether we get the same safety value as they're showing in the Federal Highway Administration's thing. I did forward to, I can't remember who I forwarded to, city manager or assistant city manager. There is a study out there, it's not clear what the conclusions are, of five-lane plus road diets. I'm not sure, I haven't checked the validity. Assistant city manager, did you get that?
We did, yes. And one of the components that we included within the RFP request was for the selected consultant to evaluate other examples similarly. So that is a component that we're requesting information on as far as the RFP.
Thank you. So those case studies are good, but they have to be relevant. And so when you have a adding street parking, like we would do here on a highway that goes to the three lanes with street parking, if we have any case studies, including in a road diet case study, that shows that the parking situation is actually a safer alternative than taking parking completely off the roads. I think Mr. Craig Carlson pointed out that a lot of these studies are done in urban, dense urban areas, like Chicago or something like that. And many of them are. And there are very few of the studies were done in suburban sprawl, where you have off-street. Rolling Meadows is almost exclusively off-street parking. And so my concern is, are we taking what is safer, putting street parking on, making it somewhat unsafer? That's my question, and case studies would be sufficient.
So prior to we have follow-up questions from our city engineer, city manager Sabo, can you provide some follow-up as to whether this is already included in the RFP? Thank you.
Yes, so there is a section under Task Four, it's subsection D. What we've included in here is, is as part of the traffic study, a evaluation of the crash reduction factor. And what that does is it takes Federal Highway Administration, Highway Safety, it's the AASHTO. And I look to our city engineer exactly what the acronym stands for, but it is a highway safety manual that is used by engineers, traffic engineers, to predict highway overall crash reduction factors resulting from the project, which includes the on-street parking. So as the traffic study is conducted, part of the deliverables will be to look at the on-street parking considerations and how that on-street parking would impact any sort of crash potential.
Yeah, all I say is, as long as it's relevant to our situation, I would be willing.
I understand, I just want to make sure that we're clarifying from the staff recommendation for the RFP. If, because right now, we're, there is a recommendation to take a component out
Correct.
to be done in-house. And in some of your comments, you had requested that there was additional information that was conducted in-house versus through a consultant. So are you, are you comfortable with having the data that you've requested included in the RFP so that you ultimately are getting the data, but it's not being, that portion won't be conducted in-house? That's going to be conducted as a component of Task Four in the request.
I think I understood from our city engineer that she could get that kind of information, is that correct?
Well, that's why I wanted to clarify, because I, this is included in the RFP and so far, this isn't a motion that's out on the floor right now of whether this should be removed. Right now, we just have some comment about, about moving forward with having parking conducted in-house. So right now, before we even clarify, I just want to have a, either formally put that out as a motion so that way we can get some consensus moving forward. Because if there isn't consensus for that to be taken out of the RFP, you'll still get the data, it just won't be there.
Correct.
Okay. Manager Sabo, did you have anything else to add before we move that forward?
With respect to that portion of the crash reduction factor, we would recommend keeping that within the traffic study component. In order to get a third-party evaluation and recommendation on the crash factor component. While we can take a look at that in-house, I think it would be beneficial as that traffic consultant is looking at this holistically to include that within the traffic study component. So it extrapolated it out of the parking study, but I think it still gets you the information that you're looking for.
I would go along with that, but.
Okay, consistent. All right, then no motion on the floor, then we'll continue moving forward with this item. Yes, Alderman Budmats?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So can you, I read something this week that the traffic study is proposed would be considerably more, obviously there's, the RFP hasn't been issued yet, but can you give me an idea of the cost that would be associated, or we're estimating budgeted with the RFP as it presently was discussed?
So I'm looking to our team to see if we can approximate a ballpark. I will say, once during the last meeting, based on the initial inquiry about a traffic study, the number that was put out there was, was your typical traffic speed study, which are commonly done by municipalities. Once we evaluated the scope and the data that was sought, which included additional information touching on things like crash reduction factors and additional components, our evaluation and consulting with our team, we felt that the number that was initially provided, and I don't recall that number that was mentioned at the last meeting, but we felt that it would be a much higher number than what was initially anticipated. So I'm looking to our Public Works and city engineer team on any sort of ballpark, if we have anything that we can at least approximate. I think until you issue the RFP, you truly don't know. But based on our expertise in this area, we can give a better approximation.
Yes, so my estimate based on if we remove the parking study and do that in-house would be around forty to sixty thousand dollars.
And then the number of hours, the, to, for in-house people to do that study, can we estimate? I mean, I understand that their salary is already paid for, but this takes them away from doing other work. So there is a real cost that is, that is incurred. So can we estimate the number of hours that our engineering staff would spend working on this?
If we were to do the whole proposal in-house, we don't have the.
No, just the parking portions that the alderman is requesting to be done in-house?
Just the parking portions, my estimate would be forty hours.
Forty hours. Okay, and so even at a hundred and twenty-five hour, an hour, we're looking at ten thousand dollars in addition to fifty thousand dollars. So we're looking at sixty thousand dollars in cost for the taxpayers to have us do this locally, in-house, and pay for it out of our budget. Or our, revising our budget to pay for it rather than to have it be done as part and parcel of the plan and have the County of Cook pay for it under the grant. So our, I just want to make sure everybody understands that we're paying sixty thousand dollars out of our money. So, and not having Cook County pay for it. Also that we have the comfort of knowing this data before we pass a plan that may or may not happen anyway. And so the point is, is that in two thousand and nineteen, we passed this plan already to have a town center. And nobody has worried about it one iota. We haven't voted on a single dollar other than the plan to this, to, that's it. We haven't moved a shovel, we haven't, we haven't done anything to any streets, all for stuff that was planned, passed in two thousand and nineteen. So I think it's foolish, I think it's a waste of our taxpayer dollars, of Rolling Meadow taxpayer dollars, to pay fifty thousand dollars for a study so that we can look at data, which I honestly, I'm not qualified to look at, at traffic studies and figure it out. I, I, we, I'm qualified to hire an engineer to do it, and I can read their, their interpretation, and I can, and I can say, that makes sense, or it doesn't, you know, and I can ask questions about it. But I'm not qualified to be a traffic analyst or to do parking analysis. So I really think we need to do is have County of Cook pay for it and, and not, and not us pay for it, not put the burden on the taxpayers. Because quite honestly, once we pass this, nothing will probably happen for years. We're all re-elected for at least two years. Congratulations, or longer, okay, the sum will be here for four years. So we will be able to determine if anything gets passed, if anything gets spent. So it's not like, once we do this, it's, it's set in stone, we can't go back. We have to, we have to re, there is no repaving, okay? It's, it's repainting, okay? And so it's foolish to waste taxpayer dollars and our engineers' time to do this when we could, we could have county dollars pay for it as part of a grant. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. We, we can establish the town center zoning district, we don't have to worry about the moratorium expiring, and, and we can have somebody else pay for it. If you want to waste their, the taxpayers' dollars, you can do it. I'm not voting for that. I think it's foolish.
So Alderman Budmats, to clarify, it sounds like your, your recommendation then is to not proceed with the request for proposal, but instead on the next agenda to bring back the determination of the recommendations for, for the, from planning and zoning, from the last.
This is, this is a notice city council meeting. I mean, I'd like to make an agenda that we, we take the item off the table and that we take and we add the, the request that you want to have exactly the way you want to have it in the Phase One documents. And the county pays for all of this information, all fifty thousand dollars or sixty, however much it's going to cost. It's all included in the grant application and the county pays for all of it, rather than us pay for all of it. If they don't, it doesn't happen, nothing changes, no, no, no harm, no foul. But this way, we're paying fifty thousand dollars to analyze data before we put an application in for a grant. I, I don't see the logic behind doing that. And so I, I want to give you the information that you want. I, I get having the data so that you can make an informed decision. And the informed decision needs to be made before we pay somebody to rearrange the road, before we pay somebody to, to, to do any shovels in the earth. Not before, not before we pass a plan. We passed a plan in two thousand and nineteen, nothing happened. I passed it, nothing happened. You haven't done a thing with it. So what difference did it make?
So, okay, so the question that is on the table here is regarding the contents of the RFP. And your response is to not pursue an RFP, but instead to?
To take all of the items that are in the RFP, just as requested, make them part of the Phase One engineering documents so that we have all that information. Somebody else pays to give it to us, and then we evaluate it at the time that we're going to move, if we're going to move forward with the plan or not. Let the county pay for it.
And the Phase One, then, requirements of that RFP would be incorporate or would be contingent upon the majority of the council making the change to the comprehensive plan for us to be able to pursue that.
We can, a comprehensive plan, we can, we can make the comprehensive plan change with the, with the modifications. We're going to have to vote on it anyway. Just as the way it was presented, there were options. It wasn't, we're not going to do all three options, we're going to do one of them or two, or however we're going to make the options out. We had decisions to make at some point in the future anyways. So what I'm saying is, is let the county pay for that information, that data and that, the information that's requested within the RFP, and then we'll make our decisions at that point. Have all of the data in front of us, and then we can decide if we're going to move forward with it. But I don't see this, I don't see the, I don't get any benefit in, in us, the taxpayers of Rolling Meadows paying for it when all the taxpayers of Cook County could pay for it.
Understood. And I, I'm going to ask staff for some guidance on the procedures that we would need to do to be able to proceed with that recommendation. So city staff, Alderman Budmats, has posed to the council a recommendation to incorporate all of the RFP items as a request for Phase One engineering. However, in order for the council to be able to, for, in order for the city to pursue Phase One engineering, the comprehensive plan would need to be adjusted. Is that correct? Can you help us understand that process?
So in order for us to have a viable grant application with the county, we would need to be able to substantiate to them that the transportation portion, so that the road diet components are included and have been adopted by the council so that when the county then evaluates the viability of this grant, they know that they aren't contributing money towards a project that is still in the concept phase. So as far as the, the grant application and its success, and its potential success, if, if adopted, I believe that'll give comfort to the county to know that their contribution of grant funds towards this initiative is working towards accomplishing the project that is outlined. Without it being adopted, I think it's, it's very conceptual and it may not be looked at favorably with respect to those reviewing the grant. So, you know, our, our suggestion is ultimately, you know, it's, it's a question for this evening, but ultimately, if, if the council does desire for us to pursue the Invest in Cook grant, the request would be that the comprehensive plan include the road diet component, which we then can substantiate as we proceed with that grant implication to say, you know, that the, the comprehensive plan includes this component and that our next step in bringing the plan concepts to reality would be undertaking this necessary first step of the design engineering.
So then procedurally, for us to be able to move forward with that suggestion, would we need the recommendation from our Planning and Zoning Commission, which we had received at the prior city council, come back on an agenda at the next April meeting to be voted upon by the city council?
Yes, yeah, we didn't, we did not include it on this agenda tonight. But it would have to come back on a future agenda, and then that can be considered by the council.
So, okay, so then to clarify for your recommendation here that we have on the, that we would have on the floor would be for the council to reject the RF, to pursue the RFP timeline that we have and instead incorporate those components into requested Phase One engineering to pursue the Cook County grant contingent upon the council, voting in favor of adopting the plan in full that was originally proposed to the council so we could move forward in that process as originally proposed.
Yes, here's the idea. The question is, are we doing this, are we doing the study to prove that we don't want the diet? If we're doing that, then there's no sense in moving ahead. If, if we're doing the study to see if the diet makes sense and if it's feasible and how it should be done safely, then all of those three questions would be answered in the Phase One, in the Phase One process. Which means we could get all of those answers that you're looking for as part of the Phase One deal. If we're doing the study so. If we're doing the study so that we, so that those members of the council who want the study, want it purely done. So that this doesn't move forward and that they can prove their point that it's a, that's a poor idea and that they don't like the idea. Then then let's wash the whole deal and not bother wasting fifty thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money.
Aldrin O'Brien and then Aldrin McHale.
Thank you, I was just gonna say, I don't wanna rehash, I know it's an estimate, we're estimating, it is double what the estimate was. More than double at the last time, I still don't feel comfortable, I know my last comment at the last meeting. Every study could come back and show a road dot work here, but I have s- heard from three residents that are in favor of it. The other thirty-three notes or fifty notes I've received, at least from the third ward, have not been in favor, other than fixing Oriole and Kirchhoff to make it safer. So, I'm not opposed to adjusting the way you did Aldrin Budmats, cuz I know we also spoke last time. It sounds like on average is about a fifteen to twenty percent chance Cook County would approve that, and I'm worried about the lost time. I'm not opposed to seeing what quotes are, I mean, we have experts here, so it's probably gonna come back in the forty to sixty thousand dollar range. It might come back at thirty thousand, but also the lost time, but also if we were to move this forward. Unless I get an overwhelming change from third ward resident saying, yes, I'm in favor of it now. I would still not be able to support it, even if all the data came back and said this would work, cuz it sounds like residents don't want it. And that's what I feel comfortable being from the third ward on, I'm not opposed to it, and also wearing the EDC hat that we had a meeting last night. We're trying to make sure what's best for businesses would would also help bring residents to downtown, so. I'm not strictly opposed to your idea, I just, unless I get an outpouring from the third ward. Prior to the next meeting, I would probably still be a no, I'm comfortable with sections one through three, full speed ahead. That has full support from every resident I've talked to on this, I just can't get behind, it might not be right right for all of those.
Okay, so now that we've heard from Aldrin O'Brien, effectively answering your question, Aldrin Budmats, which was regardless of what the recommendation would come back on. With this RFP, Aldrin O'Brien is stating publicly that he would not be in favor of moving forward with the road diet. However, Aldrin Kohler is that then, uh so I I would like to open up the question to you. If that, if you're consistent as well with that uh with that answer.
Madam Mayor, I think Aldrin Budmats misrepresented what I had said earlier. I did not say I was against it, I did not say I was for it, I've always said in this meeting and in this council. That I haven't seen compelling data either way, the current study is highly flawed in my opinion. In that it does not present relevant data for a five lane going to three lane, it doesn't show anything. If you're going to try to reduce traffic accidents, you have to understand the root cause of the accidents. I can tell you, the only fatality on Kirchhoff Road, from what I understand that happened in two thousand and twenty-two. Had nothing to do with speed, had nothing to do, it had to do with a resident who was walking in a dark street. It wasn't at Oriole, it was down at Dove and Kirchhoff. I don't think speed was involved, all the things, the road diet would not have stop stopped that, that's my thing. Unless I understand what's causing issues on Kirchhoff Road, I can't solve and say that it's gonna be, this plan's gonna be safer. And this, the plan says, the advantage of this is it will be safer. I need to see whether that is true or not, so I haven't gone either way, I can tell you, the residents' input has been overwhelmingly. Against it as opposed to for it, but that's only part of it, I said I would prioritize public safety. I would pub- prioritize the business advantage, the economic, there's a component here, economic development. I would prioritize that and then we'll go from there, I would also like to comment that I'm not gonna pass. I would not pass the buck to the county, I'm a county resident also, so I'm paying for this either way. And I recognize there's a lot more people paying for it in the county than this, than we would if this Rolling Meadows resident. But I will, I would be against presenting a plan that we are not confident is a good plan to the county, that's just also irresponsible. That's all.
So Aldrin Budmats then, it sounds like you have two answers here, where one of the aldermen are essentially stating that regardless of this study, as you have stated. They're pretty set on where they plan on voting so far with the input that they've received from their residents. Aldrin O'Brien, to clarify, if that were to change over time, is this, are are you also then in Aldrin Kohler's camp? Where you would state that that vote could potentially change based off of that input?
If the residents that are represented feel that the additional data we're requesting and staff's open to soliciting and getting for us, if that would change their perception, absolutely. My vote would go with how the residents, cuz that's my role here, I feel as the third ward is sharing what the majority of the third ward was. But right now, if this was to come back in two weeks at our next meeting and I did not get an overwhelmingly change. My vote would remain how it is, but if we do get the data and they change it and see the other ideas, absolutely. If the majority of third ward is in favor, that's how I would vote at that time.
Okay, so then to summarize so far on the dais, we have some comments from several our aldermen to state that they're, they do see value in the RFP. They do uh want to request that additional information, um and we've had then the possibility to say we could. Do this through the county, but it sounds like then that is uh an option that's out here, we've had some, we've heard from several council members. On how they feel about that approach, are there any other comments or questions from council members at this time, Aldrin Boucher?
Um so, my concern is the statement that we passed this in two thousand and nineteen and nothing happened. So then we re-RFP'd this plan and how much did we spend on the Kirchhoff plan in general, when we re-RFP'd? When we started this?
Staff will answer, but this was uh essentially taken care of through grant funding, so, but go ahead, staff.
Yeah, so we um we issued an RFP really for two studies together that were pretty salient at the time. That it looked like the bears were imminently coming to Arlington Park, which was Kirchhoff Road as well as the Northwest Corridor. Um I'm forgetting the exact number, it was either seventy or eighty thousand dollars. Um I don't anticipate, at least right now, but you know, different conversation, but probably doesn't make sense to continue with the Northwest Industrial Part. Until there's more certainty up there, we we probably don't need that study, um you know, until there's more certainty around Arlington Park. Um on the Kirchhoff roadside, we, yeah, we've spent most of that much at this point.
And then we also did this five years prior, ten years prior to that. So we keep putting our money and grant money out to start this process and then we don't finish the process. So, it's great that we can just pass this and nothing happens, but if it sits at Cook County and we don't get approved this year. And then we don't get approved next year, and then we don't get approved, let's say it goes three years. Then where, where are we RFPing this to start all over again, and then we're still spending money? We're never getting to the root of what is actually causing us not to, I don't wanna be back here, whoever's here when this comes again. And they said, well, we passed this plan in twenty twenty-four and nothing happened, and we passed this plan in two thousand and nineteen and nothing happened, but here's another plan. That may or may not happen, I think it, we're stuck in a cycle of us getting this going. And then we get to a point where nothing happens, I am like Aldrin O'Brien, I cannot vote. On a plan that doesn't provide me data that the plan is actually going to work. So if we say we want Cook County to do this and Cook County in three years comes back and they do this. And they say this doesn't work, we could have done this and moved on to find a, find a plan or find something. I I I just think that saying that we're gonna wait for Cook County is throwing this off to somebody else. And then we're gonna be back here doing this all over again, and I can't, my ward residents have made it very clear to me. That this is not something that they are, can get behind, and like Aldrin O'Brien, they send me here to speak for our ward. So, if a hundred percent of the people I'm hearing from in my ward, if you live in my ward and you're, think this is a great plan, I haven't heard. A hundred percent of the people I've heard for, heard from are against the road diet. Therefore, as the re- the person who represents Ward Five, I have to listen to my ward. So, we could send this back, you guys could say no to the RFP, that's great, I could not be a yes vote to make this the strategic plan. Until I have data to show that it's actually going to work. Cuz otherwise, we're just, we're back here in ten years saying, well, here we go again, we're gonna try it the twentieth time, I I gotta break the cycle.
Staff, did you have any additional questions from uh Aldrin Boucher's co- uh comments?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Um Aldrin McHale?
Okay, so, I was on the planning and zoning, or excuse me, I was on the steering committee um for this project, as was Aldrin Reyes. And so I spent lots of time outside of my official duties on this council and that committee, the whole meetings. Um talking and going through this plan. Um, one of the things I think that we are sort of forgetting a little bit is the goal. Of this plan, which is to create and identify a town center that doesn't currently exist, we are creating something new. This, this isn't Kirchhoff Road right now, Kirchhoff Road is a five lane road, that's pretty much it. Um residents and visit, the residents and visitors can enjoy year round, that our city heritage is celebrated. That this small town and local character is highlighted, we have struggled to establish an identity. Um and residents have expressed a desire to have a town center space. In order to get there, we need to look at all of our options. At our last council meeting, we were supposed to, or we were asked to incorporate this into our comprehensive plan. So that we can attain the data needed in order to move forward. Whether that data came back saying the road diet was a good option, whether they came back and said it was not a good ju- good option. We were going to apply for this grant, when we decided that that was not the direction the council wanted to take to. We are gonna take on this road study, uh this traffic study on our own, that kind of eliminated that part of this plan. Because it came with the traffic study and the phase one engineering, which would have provided both sets of information that we needed. To make an intelligent decision and what is best for the city. With that, the goal being creating a town center. Um ancillary to that is we get the benefit of the safety of the road. That would have come out in the engineering plans and in the traffic study that we were going to put in for the Cook County grant. Um, at this point, if I can clarify, if we are to approve this RFP this evening. And we obtain our own traffic study at the expense of Rolling Meadows residents. Um, we would take that, we would, excuse me, we would narrow the scope of the grant. And we would only request the engineering portion of the grant, may I just ask if that's correct?
So, if ultimately the council decides that tonight we would move forward with the RFP. And also direct staff to pursue the Invest in Cook grant for the Kirchhoff project. Then we would focus the grant component on the design engineering. Um, you know, the the phase one typically includes a traffic study, and so we would work with with the way that our application is presented. And uh work with the county to identify exactly what it is that we would be needing them for, since we're, we'd be already undertaking this comprehensive traffic study. Um and focusing it solely on the engineering component. Um, just for the council's awareness, as we continue to discuss the grant, the reason the question is before the council this evening. Is that we were made aware by Cook County that we could only apply for and pursue one grant project, one project under the Invest in Cook grant. Um we had submitted two, um without the knowledge that we couldn't have two in the, in the running. And so, um that's why we're seeking direction from the council on whether to continue to pursue the Kirchhoff Road um design engineering. Or the alternative, which is the library bicycle path connection.
Okay, so, so in order to create this town center, which was the reason why we did the study. Which is what we had put in the com- comprehensive plan in two thousand and nineteen. Um, at this point, could you speak to um? How, how we've been working to get, or the current state of businesses on the corridor. Where they're at as far as, um you know, uh being good businesses, which they all are, don't get me wrong. But, the property over here at Owl and Kirchhoff, what's been happening with that, has there been any movement on anybody coming in? What the, what we've had um proposed to us for that property, what we've had proposed for the property on um. The uh in front of the M I home property, like what what's happening here with our businesses and bringing business onto Kirchhoff Road in its current condition?
Sure, so, um the parcels that you're referring to, so we we refer to them as the opportunity sites in the plan and. Um, I'll kinda go through them uh to provide just comprehensively uh an update and of where where we've been and how we. You know, how we've gotten to today ultimately, um the parcel at our corner here at Owl and Kirchhoff. Um ultimately was acquired by the city as part of the redevelopment of the Riverwalk condominium project. The uh properties, I I believe three of the ta- we'll call it towers were were completed. And there was a fourth one planned, however, the developer at that time chose not to continue proceeding with the development. Um, after that developer decided not to continue, um based on our our review of records, there was a proposal. For a senior living facility, um which uh was working through with the city. Um in trying to negotiate a uh price in order to sell that property to the developer. For a senior living facility development, at the end of the negotiation, ultimately, there wasn't an agreement. And so the property has remained in the possession of the city since that time. Um I believe we're, we're thinking back to about twenty ten, um is my recollection. To date, at least in the three years that I've been here and based on the records that I have been able to find, as well as um, you know, and working with community development. As we've worked on this project, um our records don't show that there has been any additional expressed interest. Um the city has also not actively marketed the spaces, we were trying to determine what its highest best use has been. Um we've utilized it for holiday decorations and and those types of uses, but for the most part, it has been fellow unused, unused properly, property. Um, going uh eastward on Kirchhoff, you then get to the fire station property, which after the city had vacated that property, we went through a marketing effort. Um to try to sell it, the city had um entered into negotiations and discussions with an entity who desired to redevelop that property. Into a uh food hall type of use, and uh ultimately, as part of that negotiation. There were concerns about some of the financial implications and also there were concerns about easements and parking. Um and the, and the lack of parking ultimately based on some of the existing conditions on that property. Um, once that uh entity had gone away, we've received occasional inquiries about the status and and interest into. Uh redeveloping that site, but oftentimes it comes back to the discussion of, you know, there there isn't a lot of space to provide for parking on that property. And concerns about parking shortfall, um ultimately, we have not gotten any uh formal proposals um for that property. And in communication with some of the recent entities that have reached out, um who are aware that we're going through or have been going through the study plan. Um we've informed them that once the the study is concluded, we'll be, we plan on conducting an RFP at which time. Um if they're in interested in the property, they could submit a proposal. Um that then takes us on to the vacant parcel in front of the M and I Homes property. Um that property, that parcel was designated at the time when um the M and I Homes uh planned development was enacted. As a piece of the property to remain for commercial use. I will note that the current zoning for that property and the depth of that property. Virtually render its development under existing zoning almost impossible. Um in speaking with the uh broker for that property, the types of uses that have been evaluated for it include car wash. Um automotive care and maintenance and a daycare use. Um, all of which would face a variety of challenges to develop from a variety of of land use. And uh and zoning complications, and so for those properties, um we have not seen movement and traction under existing zoning. In our, our, our existing situation, however, um with respect, I I will say, you know, in a, in a word of optimism, I I am proud of the fact. That the existing businesses, the the shopping centers have done well, um and we have seen um high occupancy rates. I would say that the um, the locations that are experiencing vacancy have, are not by virtue of market. But, for example, Joel's um retired and and decided to close that business, uh the Chase Bank, while the lights have been off there for many years. Chase continues to exist as a tenant of that facility, they've chosen not to operate the bank there. Um in communicating with that property owner, they're looking at options on how to potentially re uh. Uh re- re-tenant and and activate that space, um but overall, I think that there are a number of opportunity sites. That have um, have not moved forward with redevelopment that were some of the focuses as part of the study. And ultimately, um part and parcel with the recommendations that ultimately were were advanced for council, council's deliberations and consideration.
Okay, so, um we have.
Okay. So, we have three, three opportunity sites that we can't really do much with unless we do something about the current conditions that we currently have right now.
We believe that the existing conditions present challenges to effectively achieve redevelopment in those sites in a way that our community would be supportive of.
So in order to achieve this goal of creating and identifying a town, a town center for Rolling Meadows, we need to address the road configuration in staff opinion, correct?
So the, the, the transportation, the road configuration component of this, I think has a variety of different factors and considerations. You know, I, I think we've talked a lot about, and I apologize that I wasn't here at all last meeting, but I, I know that the, the council had talked extensively about the economic, economic development, development impacts and the placemaking impacts, the study, the, the safety components to it. And, you know, as, as we took input from the community, what we had heard often was that people were looking for a walkable space where year-round activities could happen. And as part of that, the concern, some of the concerns that had come up were the width and speed of, of traffic moving along Kirchhoff Road. And so similar to any type of, of study or project, there were a number of inputs that went into this, and part of the outputs included a recommendation that we narrow the movement of traffic through Kirchhoff Road, which would provide for on-street parking, and also create a placemaking, a destination type of feel, where as one would experience in a variety of different neighborhood or downtown types of, of areas, traffic is slowed a little bit in order to provide for a more vibrant, walkable area. It's common throughout the Chicago region and throughout the United States. You know, really what we're looking at doing here is, is highly, highly common nationwide in these types of districts. And so, you know, the recommendation that's been presented as far as the traffic configuration, I believe identifies and addresses the different inputs that went into this, the feedback that we received, and takes into account professional opinions among city staff, as well as the consultant who worked on the project, who ultimately advanced it for, for council consideration.
Great. So, at this point that we're, that we're at, we're asking to be approved, to give our okay for this RFP at the expense of, of the city. If this traffic study comes back, and the engineering comes back saying that the road diet is the way we go, this is the way we're going to achieve the goal of creating and identifying a town center that doesn't currently exist, if we're going to do all that, just to turn around and say, no, I don't see why we would continue. However, I would be willing, even though I'm not happy about it, I would say I would approve the RFP for tonight for the opportunity for us to continue to move forward, to try not to have this plan sitting here for another 20 years. To start to step forward, to start to identify Rolling Meadows as a small town with a walkable, with a walkable downtown area that visitors and residents alike can enjoy, and utilizing everything that we have to offer. I understand that we're not Arlington Heights, and I understand the bears are coming. I understand all those things. We don't have a train station. I understand that too, but we have a beautiful park on either side of Kirchhoff Road that can be utilized to make this corridor something special and different than everybody around us. So I would be willing to say, yes, let's move ahead with the RFP so that we can get the engineering, so that we can make smart decisions on how to give Rolling Meadows the future that I think it deserves. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kohler, you've got two comments on this, so if you've got something that's quick, we can include it. Otherwise, we would generally move forward for our city council.
No, all I want to say is in response to Alderman McHale is, the study says the biggest challenge, I've read it on page eighty-two, is the biggest barrier is the Osco Jewel anchor section. That's the biggest challenge. That falls under the economic development part. I think that's the main focus. I don't really, I, I get the transportation part, but I think that's our main focus, and we should move forward on getting that figured out. That's it, Mayor.
Okay. So, we have some direction here from the council, where it looks like we have a majority that's saying to move forward with the RFP with parking removed, so that, that it is completed in-house. Additionally, based off of the discussions that we've had regarding the establishment of the town center zoning district, the question before us, I actually, has staff had a chance to be able to talk about that item first?
No, I, I think that if, yeah, if we could have Community Development Director Cole provide a little bit of background so that we know with respect to that piece of it.
Okay. Okay. So then we have direction then to move forward with the RFP.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Of course.
Yes. So the, the second of the three items we're looking for direction on here from the city council is that, you know, as part of our efforts to implement this plan expediently, we have, we've drafted, you know, a new zoning district for the, the corridor, right? So right now, it's a mix of, going from memory here, but I believe it's mostly R5, which is our multifamily district, which is a lot of condominiums. And then there's patches of C2, which is really a, to simplify it, like a strip center retail, right? So ninety feet in, in the front for parking, and then you have a shallow building, and then, you know, twenty to thirty feet in the back. This town center district tried, implements the recommendations from, that recommendation category three in the plan, which is really bigger buildings towards the front of lots, parking in the back, eliminating parking minimums for commercial to let the market drive it, and so on. This is the hearing that's currently pending, excuse me, before the Plan Commission. And as, as you've heard, it's been a bit of a, there's been a bit of uncertainty about how to handle that here and going forward without action being taken on the plan, and knowing that potentially if the road diet wasn't approved, there may be, there may have been changes to, to the recommendation we would make. What we're looking for from the council is, again, really direction, if, if this new zoning district, if this rezoning should proceed, or if it should be held pending the disposition of the plan, the practical consequences of that. First, you know, I, I would feel much more comfortable doing the, doing, soliciting proposals for city-owned property without knowing the, the road diet part, I think would be difficult, but at least be possible. Not knowing that or the zoning that would apply, I think would, would mean that would continue to be deferred. Again, the moratorium expires at the end of the month, and so we'll see if any proposals come through without that in place. Deferring that is a larger window of time in which people could try to make developments work under the existing zoning in the corridor, which may not match this plan if it's approved. Those are the biggest considerations. You know, I will say there's a, a small amount of expense to stopping this and starting over. You know, when we did this, twice now in this process, we sent U.S. mail to all of the owners of properties along the corridor and within three hundred feet. That's a lot of properties. So, you know, it's about seven, eight hundred bucks, takes us about a day to, to stuff those letters and put them in the mail. That's, that's not the biggest thing in the world, but since the, the question was posed at one point, that's kind of the, the physical cost of, of deferring this hearing.
Okay. You've also mentioned Assistant City Manager, that we, as a council, should consider that the recommendations, as you noted, are contingent upon, as they currently stand, are contingent upon the transportation component. Is there a recommendation from staff regarding whether this should be deferred at this time?
Yeah, there's, there's no right answer to that one, Madam Mayor. I mean, I think knowing that there's not a lot of disagreement on items one, two, and three, I think most of the content here is, is as we would recommend it. There's a couple of things, like trying to push entrances towards the street or the location of parking versus the building, where we may have a different opinion if, if the road diet wasn't pursued. If we were asked to proceed, you could always amend those at a later date. You can, again, also wait to, to take action on those. So there's, I wish I can give you a, a more certain answer.
Okay. So with that, are there questions from council this evening regarding this question before us? If no questions or comments, then we will be able to provide direction. So there don't appear to be any additional questions or comments with this from the previous discussion I'm sure we've had for item A. So I will then ask for a straw poll here in the interest of time from our council for those who are in favor of the PZC to continue to hold hearings and make a recommendation regarding the town center TC zoning district. Given that, as Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Cole had mentioned, this does not appear to be a controversial item for the comprehensive plan. All those in favor? It's unanimous. So we then, yes, Manager Sabo?
If, if I can make just one comment, as, as this item continues its consideration before the PZC, I think it's important to note that the TC zoning consideration is separate from the road diet consideration. And so as the PZC, as well as the public, just for people's information, as this zoning component consideration goes through, it's important that the focus and, and what is being looked at with that TC zoning question remain on that. You know, I, I think the road diet component is, is a separate item, so as, as just a, a mechanism by which to keep the focus and keep ourselves moving forward on these many pieces that are happening simultaneously, the TC zoning is, is a narrow focus on the zoning and isn't a focus on the road diet component. So I, I just wanted to offer that clarification as this item then continues back on to PZC for further hearing.
Then that differentiation is noted on the council. Does the council have any other questions regarding that differentiation at this time? Okay. If there are any questions from the public, then we will certainly have them reach out to the city, and we'll make sure that you and staff will be able to answer any questions regarding the change in that. And we'll also ensure that our Planning and Zoning Commission is very clear about that differentiation as well, per the observations from Alderman Kohler. So looking at the last item, item C, so earlier, Manager Sabo, you had mentioned that we have two grant, or two applications at this point submitted for Invest in Cook. So we are looking to have some assistance with our development here in the city of Rolling Meadows. Can you provide any additional information on this item before we open it up to discussion from the council?
Yeah. So the, this is a time-sensitive request. The county will need to know from us this week which application we desire to move forward with. The city has a, a couple of letters of recommendation, both from the Park District and the Library, with respect to its application for the bike path connection, as well as a letter recommendation on the road diet portion from one of our county commissioners. Ultimately, at the end of the day, staff is just looking for council's direction with respect to how to move forward and whether to continue with the road diet component, or if we should move forward with the library component. And so we're happy to answer any questions on those two different grant applications, but we, we do need some direction so that we can get back to the county as soon as possible.
Okay. So with that, are there any questions or comments from the council? Yes, Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Based on the earlier discussion, I would be in support of the bike trail one continuing. My only question is, that would complete that section of the bike trail, right? That's the one missing piece. Public Works Director Grosskopf, that's the one last piece of all the work we've been trying to do with the Park District, with the Library, with the city in collaboration for the bike path in that area, correct? I know there's other improvements, but this would be that last puzzle piece.
Yes, Alderman O'Brien, that is correct. We are always making look improvements for our bike path, but that one gap by the Rolling Meadows Library to connect the south path and the north path outside of the library parking lot, it will be completed with this project.
Great. Thank you. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this? Yes, Alderman Kohler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since we don't seem to have a controversial debate over the second choice, which is what Alderman O'Brien is saying, I would say that's where we go. I don't think we have clarity on what we want to do with the road diet, and therefore I'm uncomfortable proposing something to the county that we haven't necessarily, as a city, are comfortable with. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the Invest in Cook County grant applications that the city has so far submitted?
I, yes.
Yes, Alderman McHale?
Since we are giving direction to go with the RFP at this point right now, with, and we are not, if, if we choose by the end of this discussion to take on the Invest in Cook grant for the bike path, would we continue to do the RFP as is, or would we, is this because it's going to be tied to this TC zoning district? Like, no?
So the, if, if the council decides to move in the, in the bike path direction, or directs us to move in the bike path direction, we would then continue with the RFP and bring back, you know, the, the recommended vendor for future consideration at a council meeting. If the council then approves that vendor, we would start the study process. If ultimately the city chooses to move forward with the transportation portions of the plan, the road diet, we would still need to go through a design engineering process in the future. There are several questions, you know, about the future potential for grant funding on, on a variety of different scales. A lot of federal funding, federally funded grants that have been available in the past are going through, you know, there's a lot of questions about their future viability. The Invest in Cook grant is a, is a Cook County-funded grant, so we are fairly comfortable that, knowing that the funds are there in this year, but that doesn't mean that they will be in the future. So there is the potential that we may be having to foot the bill for that design engineering through our own funding sources ourselves in the future. But ultimately, if we go with the library bike path, the funds for the RFP, the study, would ultimately be coming out of likely Cities General Fund fund balance.
The bike path would come out of the fund balance?
The bike path study would come through the Invest in Cook grants. The, if I misstated that, I apologize. The, the study that we're conducting on, on the Kirchhoff Road traffic study would be in a budget amendment that we would advance, and that would come out of our general fund fund balance.
And if we, if we decided to do the, the road diet in the Cook County application, is there other grant funding available or grants available for a bike path coming up or in the future, near future?
I'm going to ask our Public Works Director to weigh in on that.
Thank you very much, Alderman McHale. Yes, we do have another application cycle that we could go for. It is one that we have tried for in the past and have not received for the bike grant, but it was pretty close. So that would be the ITEP program, so we believe it's Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. It's, it's pretty focused on bike path grants. We could apply for that one. I do believe, though, that would be a twenty twenty-six application.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No questions. The only comment I would have is I would like to continue with the Kirchhoff Road corridor project in the grant, and maybe see if the bike path, it seems like there's more opportunity for bike path grants at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien again?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two follow-up questions based on Alderman McHale's. Is, my understanding right, like, if it does move forward with majority of council for the bike path grant, there's nothing precluding us, similar to the bike path one we could apply for in twenty twenty-six? Nothing would preclude us from requesting a grant for future Kirchhoff Road work? Is that correct? It's just which one we choose to do first?
So, yes, that's, that's correct. It's, it's just a timing question. I mean, ultimately, if the Invest in Cook grant were to open up again in the future, we could pursue that, the library connection in the future, and vice versa. Yes.
Great. And Director Grosskopf, hate putting you on the spot. Do we have a ballpark, we're, we're estimating here with obviously everybody's best expertise in mind, fifty grand for the Kirchhoff study that's been requested via the RFP. We'll see when they come in. We might get excited. There's thirty thousand. We might not be at seventy-five, but it's everybody's best guess. The bike path work, are we similar in cost? So it's really, are we getting a grant for sixty thousand or thirty thousand for the bike path, but we're going to spend it on the Kirchhoff study that we're requesting with the RFP? So is it kind of a wash? I, I say that very lightly, because I know Kirchhoff would be a much larger project over time, but comparing, trying to best compare apples to apples right now, what type of funding would we potentially getting for the bike grant? Would it be similar to the forty to sixty, or are we talking ten to fifteen? Would it be similar to the forty to sixty, or are we talking ten to fifteen?
It's actually a little bit higher than the forty to sixty range. I believe the last cost estimate that we had was around seventy-six thousand dollars just to do the phase one portion for the engineering of the bike path.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. Thank you, Mayor.
Certainly. Yes, Alderman McHale?
But just to clarify, it's not for the traffic study, this would be for the phase one engineering for the.
Correct, right, I was just trying to see if we're.
So we don't know the cost of the engineering.
Correct, absolutely, which I'm assuming is gonna be significantly higher because of the work that's involved in it. But right now, if we're just trying to do potential RFP costs with best estimates, what the bike path estimate would be? Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, are there, excuse me, are there any other questions? Yes, Alderman?
If we do the RFP, and it comes back and data shows we decide to add it, can we amend our application? Like, if it doesn't get approved this cycle, and it's waiting for next year's cycle, can we amend, like, can you add new data, like, when your application gets denied for college, you can give them some more stuff in the way?
So, if you are denied the application in this cycle, then that's the end of it for this year's program. If the program returns, and there's funds in the next year, and they open up the Invest in Cook once again, at that stage, we can apply for the phase one design engineering component. So, yeah, there's nothing that precludes you from applying year after year, to my knowledge that I've seen.
So it's not like it stays open, so somewhere along the way, it was said that we apply now so we stay in our spot in line, that's not a thing that's like, you're applying and they keep looking at the same applications year after year, this is reapplying each year with new information?
Correct, yeah, keeping it open allows us to be, allows the county to continue considering the grant application. However, each year's grant program is contingent on the county's budget availability for that grant program, and then, you know, the county has sometimes different priorities in future years. So, this year's application is for this current grant cycle, if not selected, then we would have to once apply, once again apply in a future year if that grant is available.
Any other questions for staff in order to be able to make a decision and provide direction? Okay, so we've had, we've heard from a number of our aldermen, and, but not from everybody, so I am going to ask for a straw poll regarding direction for this item. And the question that I will be putting forth is whether we should, as a city, provide direction to staff to support phase one engineering for the, for Kirchhoff Road while simultaneously pursuing the additional data that's been requested by the city council as well. So all of those in favor in maintaining our attempts to get the engineering, phase one engineering, which is significant, quite significant for the city? Got two? This is for engineering, phase one engineering, so not the bike path, phase one engineering. Okay, so that's majority direction then, to please continue for the Invest in Cook County for phase one engineering for Kirchhoff Road.
Thank you. Yep, that's all the direction that we needed this evening.
Thank you very much. At this time, there are no mayoral appointments, however, we do have a mayoral proclamation. For all those who are here, we're so excited that you have joined us for the city council meeting and have remained here. As you'll notice, we will change quite frequently from different items, and so, tonight's proclamation is regarding our monarch butterflies. Our monarch butterfly proclamation begins, "Whereas, the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species, whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans, and whereas, the number of migrating eastern monarch butterflies has declined dramatically over the last three decades. And whereas, cities, towns, and counties, including the city of Rolling Meadows, have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly. And whereas, the city of Rolling Meadows continues to participate in the National Wildlife Federation's mayor's monarch pledge to demonstrate the city's commitment to creating a habitat and educating citizens about how they can make a difference at home. And whereas, monarch butterflies will soon return to the city of Rolling Meadows for the spring and summer months, and will rely on the presence of milkweed plants and nectar-rich flowers to support the next generation of monarch butterflies. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Lara Sanoika, Mayor of the city of Rolling Meadows, do hereby encourage residents and businesses throughout the city to take steps to increase the planting of milkweed and nectar plants in order to preserve and strengthen the monarch butterfly population." With this proclamation, I will hand this to our Alderman of the Seventh Ward, Alderman Mike Kohler. I'll test to make sure this is working as well. Alderman Mike Kohler is the Chair of our Environmental Committee here at the city of Rolling Meadows. Thank you for receiving this proclamation on behalf of the city. Thank you. Appreciate it. Did we want a picture as well? Oh, we got one, okay.
I could do a formal picture.
All right. Thank you.
See, we have fun here.
All right, and with that, we do not have any city clerks report this evening. For our city staff reports and our community items of interest, I will defer to City Manager Rob Sabo.
Thank you, Mayor. The Rolling Meadows Police Department will be participating in a distracted driving campaign during the month of April, which will place a major focus on cell phone usage while driving. Police officers will be working to increase awareness of these dangers and encourage all motorists to put away their phones and give driving their full attention. A senior and veterans resource fair will be taking place this Saturday, April 12th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Rolling Meadows Park District at 4001 Park Drive. For more information, contact the city's Human Services Department at 847-870-2695. The Rolling Meadows Veterans Committee and the city are honored to be hosting a national traveling memorial called Remembering Our Fallen, which will be in Rolling Meadows from Friday, May 16th to Sunday, May 18th. This photographic war memorial serves to honor and remember our country's fallen soldiers from 9/11 to present day, and will be exhibited along the bike path behind the Caroline Tower on Kirchhoff Road. Memorial ceremonies will take place each day of the exhibit. For details, visit rememberingourfallen.org, and watch for more information in coming weeks. The Rolling Meadows Police Department will be holding a prescription drug take-back day on Saturday, April 26th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Any member of the community can simply drive up and drop off any unwanted medicines or narcotic type of medicine in the front parking lot at City Hall located here at 3600 Kirchhoff Road. The Police Department's Family Services Day event will be held on Saturday, May 10th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at 2260 Algonquin Parkway in Rolling Meadows. Visitors will be treated to a free barbecue with the police while supplies last, entertainment, games, music, and face painting. For more information, please contact the Human Services Department at 847-870-2695. That's it for this evening, thank you.
Thank you very much. And for our March 2025 new business report, I will defer to our Business Development Manager Martha Corner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to announce two new businesses for the month of March. Additionally, I would like to mention that what is currently known as the Chinat Restaurant location at 2997 Kirchhoff Road is only temporarily closed. It's undergoing, at the virtue of the property owner, renovations to pivot to a new restaurant concept, and that concept has not been made public, and the time of reopening of the new brand has not yet been made public, but we'll keep everybody updated.
Thank you.
I've been told by the business owner that he will be putting a banner in the window in the near future.
Thank you. For the April 15th, 2025 Committee of the Whole draft agenda, and April 22nd, 2025 City Council draft agenda are both available within the packet, and if any council members have questions, to please contact City Manager Rob Sabo. Are there any matters not on the agenda this evening for council discussion? Yes, Alderman McHale?
I just wanted to thank city staff for the tremendous amount of work you guys have done since the last meeting that we had to put the RFP together that was requested unexpectedly, along with the incredible amount of time. Community Development and Manager Sabo have been available to answer all questions from council and public. Thank you very much.
Any other comments or matters not on the agenda this evening? All right, hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first, and Alderman O'Brien for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and this meeting is adjourned at 8:53 PM.